Welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting for Monday, March 7. I will ask the city clerk to call the role, please.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Here.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Scalati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present, we are all here. So, welcome everyone to the San Rafael City Council meeting. Present day San Rafael is located in the traditional lands of the coastal Miwak people. And we recognize our history and are grateful to the indigenous people who still reside here. So if you're new to a virtual council meeting, you'll see all the faces on the screen. This is our staff that works tirelessly every day and especially over the last two years to keep our city running so well. Thank you to all of you and soon we'll be in person or we'll be a hybrid. So we'll be some on the screen and some in person. So also, if you're new or maybe you're not to a council meeting, but we start them with this opportunity for me as mayor to address our community. And it brief, it enables us to briefly recognize all that's going on in the world outside of the borders of San Rafael. Council meeting agendas focus primarily, as they should, on issues that are often very specific to San Rafael. But we know we live in a connected world. So events that even happen far away throughout our world affect all of us, each of us, both indirectly and directly. So I want to take a moment and just comment on the war that is going on. The Russian government's attack on Ukraine is one such event. And as we watch from the other side of the world, has an autocratic country attacks a country that is democratic. I know for all of us, the images and stories are horrific. And the resilience and the resolve of the Ukrainian people is breathtaking and amazing. So our community stands with Ukrainians. And tonight, we share a collective anguish as Ukrainians fight to keep their country free. And we pray that they will be successful. So thank you for letting me say those words this evening and bringing us together. And I will now turn to the city clerk who will address how our public can participate this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. At this time, I'd like to staff, ask staff to turn off their cameras. And this meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-900-9128. You can use the meeting ID 81736920337 pound. Or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the telephone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. And if you're commenting through Zoom, you can use the raise hand button to let us know that you would like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you experience technical difficulties at any time throughout public comment, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefal.org. In closed captioning is available for this meeting. And is accessible by selecting the dropdown next to the red live button in the upper left-hand corner of your screen. And then selecting the view stream on custom streaming service. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. The first item on our agenda is open time for public expression. So anything that is not on the agenda, we open up the floor to our public. City Clerk?
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, again, you'll use the raise hand feature and if calling in, you'll need to press star nine and then star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments and they'll be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands raised at the moment here, one is.
Hi, yeah, sorry for the background noise. I'm on my bike commute home and had to duck into the Apple Store to charge my phone. I received a letter today from the city attorney regarding my latest CPR request. And it appears that in response to my questions, what you're saying is that you are not keeping any record of medical incidents that occur at your so-called quote "safe services" area unquote, which is better described as a decrepit internment camp for unhoused people, the majority of whom are black and Latino. You're also indicating that there has been no state health inspection, if I understand it correctly. I just understand that there are still no fire extinguishers at the camp. It's my understanding that you had no AED device on hand when someone went into what appeared to be cardiac arrest last winter and that person passed away. As far as I'm concerned, in large part because of your negligence. This is willful negligence since I've been calling you and writing to you and making complaint. And now you're out of compliance with AB 362 because none of the deficiencies that I indicated you had have been addressed. You're well past the 10-day period to conform to the new law, which went into effect on January 1st of 2022. So as usual, there's no item on the agenda to deal with what you're doing at this camp. But there needs to be some inquiry into what's happening. I understand that the latest news is that you're, you're apparently going to be receiving more funds.
I see no other hands raised at the moment, but I'll give it one in a few seconds.
Okay.
I see no hands.
Thank you. I will close public comment and ask the city manager to join us for the city manager's report. Hi, Jim.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple announcements that I wanted to make tonight. The first one is that the city is starting another large planning effort. Last year, we completed general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan. And we have underway our housing element. And now we're beginning work on the new citywide parks and recreation master plan. I just wanted to make sure that our community knows about that because there's a number of things that are going to be happening now and over the next several months regarding that park and recreation master plan. There is a really good status report of where we're at and all the things that are coming up on our website, which is cityofsanrefal.org. And then it's slash Parks and Recreation Master Plan with dashes in between each word. The idea is to have a guide to further develop our parks and recreation programs, create and maintain funding and set priorities for the future. So kind of like the general plan looks citywide and a number of different elements. This park and recreation master plan really focuses in on our open space, parks, trails, and all of the areas that we enjoy, primarily outdoors in San Rafael and public space. We look at existing conditions and then we've tried to identify what's missing and ways that we can make improvements. And we look at maintaining parks, updating facilities as well. Increasing ways for people to access and connect to parks and how we can strengthen programs, classes and activities within the city. So it's also our community centers. So we want to hear from our community and neighborhoods and learn about the community values, wants and needs. There's a few things that are underway or just about to happen. The first one is that we've started over the last couple of weeks, a formal statistically valid community survey to try to make sure we're hearing from a representative sample of our community. So that's going on right now. We're contacting people through our pollster or research assistance to via text, phone and email to get a statistically valid sample size, which means not every resident will be contacted. So how do you participate if you want to be and you didn't get one of our calls or texts? There's also going to be a community-wide Parks and Recreation questionnaire in starting later this month and going through May. So we'll be asking a lot of things about how people like to play, get outdoors, recreate in the community, types of programs that are important. We will have that in English, Spanish and Vietnamese. And we'll also have links on that same webpage to be able to find that questionnaire. We're also doing in-person and virtual community meetings. So it's not just answering questions, but actually kind of participating directly as well. Throughout March, April, June, September, we have a number of community meetings. Rather than list them all, they're basically, there's one at every community center and there's a virtual option as well that is located on that same webpage. And also at that site, everyone will find a place, if you're interested to enter in your email address, and then you're automatically going to get updates on all of these things regularly. So I think most everyone has opinions about these topics in San Rafael, what's working and what's not working. And we want to hear all of those opinions as we move forward with this plan. Secondly, I just wanted to remind everyone that the city council and the Mayor Kate is doing joint community conversations, which is kind of citywide and district community conversations, which has a particular focus on each district. And there's one that's coming up soon, which is why I wanted to bring it up tonight. But as part of the city council's effort to increase community engagement, these meetings are taking place throughout 2020. And again, the, as the names sound, the district ones are really focused on individual districts. So there's a series of those. And those have been happening over the past couple of months where every district has held one of these. They have been virtual so far, but we have great plans to be able to get back in person. And we've done these before as neighborhood cleanups or ice cream socials or just gatherings together. So it's a great opportunity to do that. The best place to see kind of what the next ones are that are coming up is right on our homepage at cityofsanrefal.org. There's an events section and that lists all of them. So the very next one is March 17th, so about 10 days away. And that is the joint community conversation. So that's intended to be on topic citywide, starting at 5:30 PM. And the Zoom link is on, is right there under that event section on our, on our main homepage. And they will continue throughout the year. And of course, I just wanted to add that they're not the only meetings that are going on with Mayor Kate and city council members. Those meetings are happening all the time. There's regular neighborhood association meetings, service club meetings, special projects. I just mentioned park and recreation master plan, but there's housing meetings, transportation and all sorts of other ones that are kind of ongoing. These kind of supplement those with a regular, ongoing way to be able to hear what's going on in your district or have a joint community conversation. So just because the next one was coming up and it will be our first joint community conversation of the year on March 17th. So I just wanted to make sure that, that everyone knew about that one. And that concludes my opening remarks. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing about the community engagement for 2022. I know you'd mentioned 2020, but I think we need 2022.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I just want to clarify, I.
Part of my brain may still be stuck in 2020.
We started talking about 2020. Yeah, and then I appreciate the ease of people being able to find it on our landing page. So thank you. I will see if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on the report that you just gave.
Once again, to comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. Or if you're calling in, please press star nine and wait. You'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments and they will be muted once time has elapsed. And I see no hands raised right now. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close a public comment. The next are council member reports. In addition to this virtual dais, soon to be in real life dais, all of my colleagues are out busy attending other meetings. Here's the opportunity to share what you have been up to with your San Rafael hat on. So I will start with the vice mayor, Rachel Kurtz.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Just a couple of things to update on. Mayor Kate and I did a walkabout to a number of businesses in District Four. We were really fortunate that we had a lot of people in their office and their business and we were able to say hello. And many, it was good to be able to do a check-in from previous year, when we did it last year to this year, and how things are going. So that was a good opportunity. I attended the Canal Lighting Project, which was very, very informative. And the MCC MC Legislative Committee and the Homeless Committee I attended. So Marin Council of Council Members and Mayors. And a lot, a lot of work happening there. And the focus right now is with MWPA. There is a forum that will be on the, it's this Thursday. It's really, it's focused on the Ross Valley shaded fuel break, but it really applies to all. I think we're all pretty aware of the risk of fire in our community. And if there is a fire in Ross Valley, guaranteed it's going to be affecting San Rafael and likewise for other parts of the county. So we need to listen to that. It's going to be a two-hour forum with a lot of experts speaking to why, why we need to go forward working on the shaded fuel break. Also like to mention that, that we heard about this previously around Caltrans doing a project in District Four for the Freitas Roundabout. There will be a community forum happening, community meeting happening on this Wednesday, I believe, at 6:00 PM. That is a fully funded project through Caltrans, but it's going to affect not only those in District Four, obviously, but everyone in Marin and anyone who drives and takes that Freitas exit. So an opportunity to hear what's happening and to listen and answer, ask questions. And that's it for me.
Thank you. And you'd mentioned MWPA, which is the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. And so if someone is interested in attending, that link is on their website.
It is on the website down, on the front homepage down below. There's information there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for representing us on that important committee. Councilmember Bushy.
Quick update. I attended a meeting in the San Rafael Sanitation District with Mayor Kate as well. It was a routine meeting. We discussed some final details on an ongoing project to replace some, a particular main in, in our district. I also attended a, a meeting of the Marin Council, of Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members. Their water subcommittee, we heard from their representative, from the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, also known as COS, who had some ideas on how Marin County should be procuring their water supply and some additional projects that they have going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I know MCCMC is the worst acronym. So for anyone who doesn't, is not familiar with what it is, it's all the jurisdictions come together. There's representative from each city and town in Marin County, and that's the name of the group. Terrible acronym. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have not completely memorized it, so I need to keep working on that. So I have three things to report. Back on January 28th, I'm part of Children for Change, a nonprofit to connect leaders in the community with elementary school children. I got to have my second opportunity to visit Glenwood Elementary in Councilmember Bushy's district. Several things came up. The children were very interested in our fire department upgrades, so that's very visible to them. As mentioned in Mayor Kate's statement about Ukraine, there was a lot of interest from the first graders in the conflict there. And I stand, of course, in solidarity with the country of Ukraine and hope for continued support in the hastening of the end of hostilities there. BioMarin Rare Disease Day happened on March 1st. This is my second time attending. This is a celebration of how BioMarin is making a massive impact on lives around the world with the work that they do. And it's wonderful to have BioMarin as part of our community. And then finally, I got to attend the West End Neighborhood Association Annual Meeting last Thursday. Got to give a readout on things related to the neighborhood, the district, the city and the region. And that was a great event. And that's my report for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Yaren Scalati.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. And yeah, it's been a busy month, but really fun. I also attended with the Canal Public Lighting Event, a collaboration between Boces del Canal, Dominican University with the City of San Rafael. And it was very well represented, in addition to Councilmember Kurtz, Vice Mayor Kurtz. We had, the police was there, they had like a nice table. Our city manager was there with his family. So it was definitely very good information and really appreciate the community that they've been working on this project for, you know, for a long time. So we can see what are the safe ways that we can add more lighting in the canal. I also attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Climate Action Committee. And there is a new countywide EV campaign from Ride and Drive Clean Marine. So if you go to Clean Marine, you can actually see all the spots that they are going to be driving, encouraging everybody to use EV cars and chargers. And we also deep that, dive deeper into the building electrification with experts from the building, the Caribou Nization Coalition. And that was also very interesting and see how the City of San Rafael is trying to align with the county and other cities on that development. And then I guess I'm the new co-chair for this committee for the next year. So I'm very happy to be doing that as well. I participated in a focus group discussion for the Canal Community Based Transportation Plan. So it's always amazing to hear from the community, their input. And I had like the Eastern, I attended the Eastern Rafael Parking Task Force meeting number three. So that one is also going well. And then on Saturday, I had the pleasure to attend the Canal Community Resilience Council's Green Team, which is part of the multicultural center. And we, we did a tour of the Marin Sanitary Services Recycling Center. And we had a very nice community discussion on how to keep the canal clean. It is very, always exciting to hear from the community and how passionate they are about this. And of course, Corey Bitov was there with a couple more staff members from the City of San Rafael. So again, very well represented. And I guess save the date for April 23rd, as we will have our neighborhood cleanup on lunch around Earth Day. It's on the works, but save the date. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And that April 23rd date, that's a perfect example of what will be on our event page that the city manager had referred to. So going on, starting with the transit theme, I am your representative on SMART. And we continue to have the conversation planning for the future and looking at our mission and vision statement as the conditions are changed due to the pandemic. We also heard a regional transit coordination update, which is being driven by the Marin Metropolitan, excuse me, Transportation Commission, bleh. Just acronyms, MTC. And which was really interesting. It's a regional transit coordination and it's looking at fair coordination and seamless mobility. So I got to hear it at SMART and I got to hear the same presentation today at Marin Transit. So they're actually going out and talking to all the different agencies and I'll continue to keep you in the loop. There is a group at MTC that is really looking at how do we have a coordination across, across the region, hence the name. Also at Marin Transit, we had our meeting this morning. There are three different free programs or reduced fare programs that have continued. One is a senior ADA program. Another is a monthly pass for families of low-income students. And upcoming is a free summer path, pass for youth, student youth. That will be a nine-week one. So we always want to make transit available and accessible. And those are three programs that do just that. In terms of ridership, because I know this is always interesting to my colleagues and the community. We, Marin Transit for their fixed route is now at 74% of pre-COVID ridership, which is great news. This is our essential workers and people that depend on transit. So it continues to go in the right direction. Having said that, coming up this year, we'll have to right-size service, which is a way of saying, we're probably going to have to cut back on some of the services. It is coming back, but in terms of increased cost, everything from fuel to labor. That's going to be something that the board's going to continue to talk about. But I do want to be clear that the lens that we'll be using is to maintain service to those who are most transit-dependent. So if you, if there, for example, is a route that might not have lots of people on it, but the people who are using it are incredibly transit-dependent, that will be taken in consideration as to whether it remains or not. And, oh, and then finally, switching gears, San Rafael is the only jurisdiction that's been participating in the Gun Safety Collaborative. Chief Spiller from our San Rafael PD has been attending with me. This is a group that is organized by the Marin County DA's Office, Laura Vergoole. And San Rafael is helping to be one of the key partners for a June 4th gun buyback. I'm one of the key organizers. Chief Spiller's helping me out. Captain Roy Leon's going to help me out. So you'll hear more about that. That will be an event that will be done in partnership with the Marin Sheriff's Office on June 4th. So if any of you are interested in helping out, let me know. We are looking for people to help with both fundraising and outreach. So thank you all to my colleagues for all that you do. You know, the, the dais is like part of the iceberg and then there's so much more below. So thank you. I will ask the city clerk to come on, thank you, and see if there's any public comment on the council member reports.
Yeah, thank you. If you're commenting on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're on telephone, press star nine. And once you've heard the notification that you've been invited to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. You will have two minutes to provide public comment. I see no hands raised. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. The next item on our agenda is a consent calendar. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent calendar? Okay, not seeing any. I will ask the city clerk to come back on and see if there's any public comment on the consent calendar.
Once again, you're commenting on Zoom, you'll need to press star nine. And commenting by phone, please press, or sorry, by phone star nine. And on Zoom, use the raise hand feature. You'll have two minutes to provide public comment. I see no hands raised. I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and request a motion for the consent calendar.
Having to move the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. It's always joyful when we have special presentations. And again, I keep talking about how normally there's cake. So we will get back into the chambers and there will be cake. So there's no cake this evening, but we do have two special presentations. The first one, and the city clerk is going to stay on as she'll be receiving this one. It is a proclamation supporting Women's History Month. And if you haven't heard a proclamation, there's lots of whereas's and lots of paragraphs. So I've shortened it a little bit. And, but I'm hopefully keeping the meaty parts. So whereas, every year, Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing American women and girls who have built, shaped and improved upon our nation. And whereas throughout history, extraordinary women have made significant contributions to the growth and strength in our city, in our state, in our nation in countless ways. And through their leadership, innovation and ingenuity, generations of women have made significant contributions in science, medicine, technology, business, entrepreneurship and arts and cultures. And whereas, women have been leaders in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity and in the abolitionist, emancipation, industrial labor, civil rights and peace movements, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, generations of women who knew that their gender was no obstacle to what they could accomplish and have long stirred new ideas and opened new doors, having a profound and positive impact on our community. So therefore, the city council, the city council proclaims the month of March 2022 as Women's History's Month and recognizes the many accomplishments women have historically achieved and the many ongoing contributions. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and members of the city council. I'm so happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of the city. And before I make any comments, I wanted to point out that each year, the National Women's History Alliance designates a theme for Women's History Month. And the 2022 theme is Women Providing Healing, Promoting Hope. And they state that this theme is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. Then looking around the Zoom room, I'm proud to be a part of Santa Falls Executive Team where diversity across all demographics is valued. We have five women who've been elected to serve Santa Falls. And we have the first ever woman to be selected or elected as Santa Falls mayor in our history. And outside of the Zoom room, we see women across our community, leading in business, healthcare, devoting countless hours of volunteer work to lend a hand in shaping Santa Falls' future. And while this provides all of us hope, this month, we celebrate the victories of women in history who fought and who continue to fight to get us to these moments. So on behalf of the city, I thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you. Again, I wish we were having cake because that was awesome. Thank you, Lindsay. Great comments. I think we invite the public to comment on this if they would so choose.
Yes, and here I am again. So commenting on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're commenting by telephone, please press star nine. You will have two minutes to provide public comments and then you'll be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands raised. I'll give everyone a few seconds. I see a hand raised.
Yeah, um, this is Ava Crisanti. I, I wanted to say how sad I was that it's under a female mayor that we see such horrible conditions at the police-run internment camp. This isn't really a stride-forward. um, at the police-run internment camp. This isn't really a stride forward for women. And the women on this council should be ashamed of themselves for not going out and looking at the conditions um, in that camp. Um, it's all very nice to talk about, you know, strides in women's history. Um, but this is a camp um, overseen by a female police officer, Lynn Murphy. For forty-four to sixty people, there are no more than three porta-potties. Now imagine, imagine if, if any of you nice blonde ladies had to deal with that, had to live like that. There's no electricity. There's no running water. There are no showers. Um, my concern about you're not keeping, uh, any record of the medical incidents that occur at that camp means that you have no um, detail to provide to the state if they need to do an inspection. Like, how do you, you know, how do you confirm that it's perfectly healthy to keep forty-four to sixty people in tents underneath a freeway overpass? Most of these people are medically vulnerable and they're having to inhale fumes and exhaust and particulate, um, worsening asthma, worsening COPD. Um, and you're not even keeping a record of the medical incidents, let alone providing for an AED device, which may or may not, as far as I can tell from the police record, may or may not have um, helped save the life of the woman who died at that internment camp um, back in, I believe, November ninth. Um, this needs to be on the agenda, not, you know, this namby-pamby feel-good um, thing. It, it's, it's just unbelievably hypocritical. I, I ask the women on this council to do.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no further hands.
Thank you. That was public comment for Women's History Month and reminds me that I feel blessed we're in a democracy where people can call in and give comment on any item. Um, and for those, uh, who want to know more about what San Rafael is doing around homelessness, our website has both our latest newsletters with both specific and broad information. So, uh, we don't comment on public comment, uh, but we welcome it and are glad that we live in a community where we listen to each other. So with that, I will go on to the next special presentation, and this one, extra, extra cake. It is a proclamation for Dr. Stephen Mizrock. So whereas Stephen Mizrock has served as both a member and during the last eight years, the chairperson of the San Rafael Fire Commission. And whereas during his three-plus decades of tenure on the fire commission, the City of San Rafael and adjacent communities have benefited tremendously from his collaborative mindset and direct engagement with public safety professionals. Whereas Stephen Mizrock has served as a member of the San Rafael Fire Foundation since its inception and continued to expand his influence and commitment to the San Rafael Fire Department and the members' operational, safety, and specialized equipment needs. Whereas, in recognition of his incomparable experience and dedication to the San Rafael Fire Commission, we honor Dr. Stephen Mizrock with Fire Commissioner Emeritus status. And now therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor, as well as my council colleagues, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation to Stephen Mizrock for his many important contributions to our community. And this one, we would clap, and I don't know if he's in the Zoom room, because normally we hand the microphone. I see Chief White there. I is he, I don't know if he's here, or maybe you want to speak when he's not here.
No, Mayor, I'm going to have to own a mistake here. I did not communicate directly with Dr. Mizrock, although some of the other commissioners are aware of it. And so I take full responsibility for this failure. But if I can, I'd like to just take a few seconds to share my appreciation directly with Dr. Mizrock, if that's okay.
Please do.
Okay. Well, I have to say first and foremost that I was really, um, elated to understand that we have such a supportive fire commission here in San Rafael when I came onboard the organization. And as I started to learn more about the different individuals that made up that commission, I learned directly from Dr. Mizrock, who was one of the first individuals to reach out to me. And to see his passion, to see his commitment to the fire department through his participation on both the fire commission and the fire foundation. I just have to say I've never seen anything like it in my tenure in the fire service. And given the countless things that he's done to assist the organization over the years, whether it be pursuing equipment, pursuing technology, um, fundraising, uh, creating challenge coins, sitting on many, uh, committees and working groups, and just being a, a constant supporter of the fire department and this community. Uh, it goes without saying that Dr. Mizrock has set the bar so high. I don't know that anyone ever, ever could possibly reach the level of commitment and/or dedication to our department. And so I'm eternally grateful to him. I'm certain that Chief Gray, my predecessor, is. And I'm sure I speak for all the members, men and women of the fire department, both civilian and sworn, when I just simply say thank you to Dr. Stephen Mizrock for his long-term commitment and assistance with our organization. And then last but not least, um, I, I'm really thrilled that he's agreed to continue on as his role as Fire Commissioner Chairperson Emeritus, given that we have a historical, um, uh, loss that would take place that would be huge. And he's committed to remaining despite not being officially on the commission. He's committed to remaining and will participate, um, as he's able to continue his involvement even beyond his tenure as chairperson and for thirty-plus years as a member of the commission. And so I, I say again, just simply thank you.
Thank you, Chief White. And this is being recorded, so we will be sure, uh, that Dr. Mizrock can hear your kind words and accolades. I know my colleagues all agree with every word that you said. We all know him and have seen him work tirelessly over the years. And I love the fact he accepted the emeritus. And just for folks to know, that is not something we normally do for our boards and commissions. But as Chief White just said, Dr. Mizrock's, um, massive, uh, experience and history is really crucial, especially as we start to tackle some of these big issues, uh, right now. So we are incredibly grateful to him. So thank you, Chief, for those words. We'll see if any members of the public would like to, uh, call in and add their accolades, um, or comments regarding Dr. Mizrock.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if calling in, you'll need to press star nine. You will have two minutes to provide public comment, and we'll be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands raised. Hey, there's one.
Thanks, Ava Crisanti. Um, I'd like to know if it's possible, um, for Dr. Mizrock to, uh, go down and take a look at the, uh, camp you're running on Fifth Street under the overpass, because it appears, um, that even though I have body cam, um, from last November, indicating that the police well knew that there was no fire extinguishers in the camp and that requests had been made directly to Lynn Murphy, who had blown off the need for fire extinguishers, not to mention AED devices. Um, you know, there are still no fire extinguishers. Um, there are all sorts of other bizarre things going on there, but no fire extinguishers, no AED device. Um, these are not minor oversights. I was down there, uh, last weekend and I was told that, you know, the big new homelessness czar for the City of San Rafael um, still hadn't gone out and actually met, um, any number of people in the camp. Um, he's not made any appearance there. This is a very hazardous camp. Um, there have been fires there, um, and people had to put the fires out with things other than, you know, a fire extinguisher. It's not appropriate. Um, it appears that there never was any sort of, um, fire slash safety inspection at that SSA. You know, I, I know you don't actually care about the people in that camp, but you should, if only, because it's a massive liability for the City of San Rafael. Uh, those people have a very good case against you. They're not dumb people. They're taking notes. And, you know, with reference to the earlier comment that we live in a democracy, if we lived in a real democracy, the mayor would actually be out there talking to the individuals in the camp and hearing their complaints. That has not happened. They're not even welcome at the city council. So can we get an inspection there soon? Thank you.
Are there any comments around Dr. Mizrock and the wonderful service he's given?
I see no other hands raised. I see no more public comment.
I'll close a public comment. And again, we don't try not to comment back through public comment. Uh, but I do want to say, uh, there are fire extinguishers there. Um, being that we were talking about a fire commissioner and the pub, the member of the public who called in and had that concern. Um, there are fire extinguishers in that area, and I have been out to the SSA, as have our staff. So, uh, we're not going to engage in the conversation further on that, but we do welcome, uh, working with staff to continue to meet the needs of our unhoused community. Okay, so our next agenda item is twenty-twenty-one Affordable Housing NOFA Funding Recommendation. And I see Director Judasee has joined us. Um, I will turn it over to you. Or Jake, I'm not sure who, or Alexis. Everybody's coming on. Nice to see you all.
Sorry, I just started talking and didn't unmute.
No, I didn't unmute. I wasn't sure. Okay, go ahead.
Um, yes, I'd like to, um, yes, we're very excited to be sharing this report on the, um, funding recommendations. We released a NOFA in late twenty-twenty-one, and, um, we received some applications. And, um, I'm happy to also introduce Alexis, um, Captainian, who will be providing the report. Jacob Noonan, um, you've, uh, seen him at the city council a couple of times now, and she will be providing support. Um, and just super excited to be sharing, uh, the recommendation by staff. So I'll just leave it at that and let Alexis begin her presentation.
Thank you, Director Judasee. I'm going to share screen.
Okay.
All right, can you all see that okay?
We can. There you go. Yep, perfect.
Great. Here we go. Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Um, my name is Alexis Captainian, and I'm the city's Housing Programs Analyst. Tonight, I am presenting responses to the twenty-twenty-one Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA, for affordable housing development, along with funding recommendations for your consideration. So in mid-November of last year, the city issued a NOFA for the acquisition, rehabilitation, or new development of one-hundred percent affordable rental or ownership housing projects in the amount of two and a half million dollars, with the city council able to authorize additional funding above the published amount at its discretion. The city invited qualified affordable housing sponsors to submit requests for funding for construction or preservation of affordable housing for older adults, families, and individuals and families with special needs, including individuals and families who formerly experienced homelessness. Uh, the application deadline for this NOFA was December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one by five P.M., and the city received four responses, uh, totaling approximately four million dollars in requests. So the, the funding recommendations withdraw from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which currently includes two funds, the Housing in Lou Fee Fund and the Successor Agency Low Moderate Fund. Uh, the Housing in Lou Fee Fund receives revenues in the form of payments made by developers in lieu of including affordable housing in new market rate residential projects that are subject to the city's affordable housing requirements. The fund also receives affordable housing linkage fee payments from certain commercial projects based on the projected affordable housing need that's created by the new commercial project. And the Housing in Lou Fee Fund has a current unencumbered balance of three million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Uh, and then in terms of the Successor Agency Low Moderate Fund, the administration of the Low Moderate Fund is part of the City of San Rafael's role as the successor agency to the former San Rafael Redevelopment Agency. And the city council acts as the governing board of the successor agency. The Low Moderate Fund is available for the development of affordable housing. To, um, for, development of affordable housing, uh, and that's occupied by households earning eighty percent or less of the area median income. And this is sort of pretty specific requirements, with at least thirty percent of, um, for the development of rental housing affordable to and occupied by households earning thirty percent or less of the area median income, so extremely low income. And no more than twenty percent of the development of housing affordable to and occupied by households earning sixty and eight, sixty percent and eighty percent of the area median income. So the, currently, the Low Moderate Fund has a balance of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So a panel of city staff evaluated the NOFA projects that we received based on whether they, um, met all the requirements provided in the city's guidelines for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which the city council approved in early twenty-twenty. Uh, if they demonstrated that site control or ability to achieve site control, uh, provided the greatest return on the city's investment by maximizing the number of affordable housing units created, uh, included reasonable per-unit city subsidy coupled with other funding sources, um, and contributed to meeting the city's goals for new housing development and the regional housing needs allocation. And the panel also considered project readiness, uh, and then whether projects were located within a quarter mile of transit or provided units to larger families, very low and/or extremely low-income households, or included twenty percent or more permanent supportive housing. And tonight, the council can also support the award of funding from the County of Marin for permanent local housing or PLHA funds for projects that receive funding from the city's NOFA and have also applied for the county PLHA funds. So this is through Senate Bill SB two, which was adopted in twenty-seventeen and established a permanent source of funding intended to increase the Affordable Housing Stocking California, known as the Permanent Local Housing Allocation. And so a project that's awarded funds from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, is eligible to apply for PLHA funding. And, um, we had two projects that applied for both NOFA and PLHA dollars. Uh, funds are dispersed across, um, the three CDBG planning areas of San Rafael, Novato, and, um, the county. Uh, and so, um, the goal was to fund one project in each area, so one project in San Rafael, uh, with PLHA funds matched by both the Marin County and the City of San Rafael's Affordable Housing, uh, trust funds. And then the priorities that are set by the Priority Setting Committee included family housing, rental housing, homeowner housing, special needs housing, and then, uh, a land trust in Eastern Marin that provides homeownership opportunities uh, with specific inclusion for African-Americans. Um, and so the PLHA recommendations will be brought to the council at the next city council meeting on March twenty-first. So with that sort of, um, context, uh, we'll jump into the, uh, four responses to the NOFA that the city received totaling just under four million dollars. Um, collectively, these projects would result in the completion or rehabilitation and preservation of more than a hundred and thirty-nine D-restricted affordable housing units. Uh, the, and the four responses are summarized here, and I'll also walk through each project in the following slides. Uh, three of the projects previously received funding from the city, including nine ninety-nine Third Street, thirty-three oh one Kerner, and one ninety Mill Street. So first, uh, thirty, thirty-three oh one Kerner. The Eden, the Eden Housing Project at thirty oh three oh one Kerner, uh, converts an existing three-story commercial property to forty studio and one-bedroom units of permanent supportive housing at a site that is near services and amenities, and amenities, including the Marin Health and Wellness Campus. And this project will serve homeless or formerly homeless households with mental illness and aligns well with the city's goals to create additional supportive housing for the city's most vulnerable population. The estimated start of construction is March twenty-twenty-three, with estimated completion a year later in March twenty-twenty-four. So staff recommends funding eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of the project sponsors requested one-point-eight million in gap funding through the Low Moderate Fund, um, since this project aligns well with the specific requirements for use of the Low Moderate Fund. And this award would bring the city's total funding in the project to approximately two-point-one million dollars, uh, or fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars per unit. Um, in twenty-twenty, um, as background, the city provided a grant in the amount of about one-point-two-five million to the county that supported purchase of the property. The county used the grant to, uh, receive about six million dollars in home key funds that enabled them to, uh, purchase the property, uh, at thirty-three oh one Kerner. And, um, and this is one of the projects that, um, applied for, uh, PLHA funds as well. And so the funding recommendation includes support for the Eden Housing Application to the County of Marin PLHA Fund for the thirty-three oh one Kerner project. And this is the financing stack for thirty-three oh one Kerner. Um, and, uh, important to note that the project sponsor is preparing to apply for state tax credits this year. And important to note that the project sponsor is preparing to apply for state tax credits this year. And so the additional funding provided by the city in the project improves the project's competitiveness for tax credits and bonds, which are highly competitive. And so the city's project, the city's funding support is particularly important to the project, especially given that it's located in what is considered a low resource area for tax credit and bond funding purposes, which score lower than moderate, high, and highest resource areas. Note that this is the only award recommendation that's drawn from the Low-Moderate Fund, and funding this request would result in a remaining balance in the Low-Moderate Fund of $11,169. And the next project is Canal Alliance's project at Belvedere Street, which is an opportunity to preserve affordable housing. So this is a project for the acquisition and rehabilitation of an existing apartment complex that would preserve affordable housing and prevent displacement. The sponsor is currently in negotiations for control of the site. And so that's why there's not a specific address or number of units provided, but it would be an estimated 25 to 35 units. And those units would ultimately be restricted to an average building area median income of 60%. And so the recommendation that staff is putting forward is to provide $400,000 in funds from the Affordable Housing In-Lu Fee Fund and to support an award of matching PLHA funds from the county of Marin, as this is also a project that applied for PLHA funds. And as we did have two PLHA applicants and likely only one award for the service area of San Rafael, if the project at Belvedere Street were not awarded PLHA dollars, the city award might be amended to award the full $800,000 as one option. And so this is a summary of funding sources for Belvedere Street. And so the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund would be important in leveraging additional capital to be able to purchase the property. And the sponsor would cover gaps in the funds needed for acquisition with a loan from Canal Alliance, and additional funding would be obtained once the property is acquired to be able to complete rehabilitation and potentially add additional units. The third project is an Eden Housing Project at 999 Third Street, which is a new construction project for 66 one-bedroom and studio units for older adults. This project has secured project-based vouchers through the Marin Housing Authority for all of the units and would help meet the housing needs for older adults and also formerly homeless older adults. The bottom floors of the building would house the Healthy Aging Campus operated by Vivilon, which would provide services for older adults, both in the building and in the broader community. The estimated start of construction is coming right up for this project in April 2022, with estimated completion in November 2023. And so the project sponsor is requesting $1 million in gap funding, which would bring the city's total funding in the project to 1.8 million, or approximately $27,000 per unit. As background, in 2020, the project sponsor, Eden, had initially requested a $1 million loan to close a gap, a $4.8 million gap in project funding, and the city awarded $800,000 to the project. The sponsor has since then brought in an additional $4 million from the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley and would have closed the gap. However, costs have increased since 2020, creating an additional gap. And a cost was also incurred for a vapor intrusion mitigation system that was required by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. So although the initial city award and the additional $4 million from Housing Trust Silicon Valley would have narrowed the funding gap, there remains an additional $1 million need, which we are recommending funding through this NOFA. And that would ensure the completion of this project in an expedition manner. As you can see in the list of funding sources, Eden has leveraged local public and private foundation dollars, including Marin County Home and CDBG, Marin Community Foundation, the city's 2020 NOFA, and, as mentioned before, the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley. And the last project is 190 Mill Street or the Mill Street Center, which is a new construction project that will include 32 single-room occupancy or SRO units of permanent supportive housing. Construction is already underway on this project with anticipated completion in the fall of 2022. And the recommendation is to fully fund the request at $350,000. This project aligns well with the city goal to create additional housing for people experiencing homelessness and is additionally supported with wraparound services. So with that $350,000 in gap funding, it would bring the city's total funding in the project to 1.1 million, or approximately $34,000 per unit. In 2020, Homeward Bound had requested $750,000 to close a gap for the project. And since the initial request, the sponsor has brought in additional funding and narrowed the gap further to just $350,000. So we are recommending awarding the funding as a grant to assure the project is completed and placed in service on schedule. And this is a long list of funding sources from Homeward Bound for the 190 Mill Street Center, including a No Place Like Home dollars, Marin County Housing Trust Fund dollars with a matching PLHA grant, and various private foundations and donations. This is a roll-up. So approval of the recommendation would result in a fiscal impact to the Affordable Housing In-Lu Fee Fund of $1,750,000. So just this shows the three projects that would be funded through that In-Lu Fee Fund. And if the recommendation is funded in full, that will leave $1,838,147 unencumbered in the In-Lu Fee Fund. We're recommending a grant for 190 Mill Street and then loans for the other three projects. And so at this time, just to summarize the city council options, to adopt the resolution, adopt a modified resolution, direct staff to provide additional information or take no action. And where staff is recommending adopting a resolution authorizing, sorry, this slide is kind of a mouthful, but one, the expenditure of $1,750,000 in funds from the Affordable Housing In-Lu Fee Fund and $850,000 from the Low-Moderate Fund. And we're also recommending supporting the award of funding from the county of Marin for permanent local housing allocation funds to whichever projects receive funding from the city and have also applied for the county PLHA funds. So 3301 Kerner and/or Belvedere Street. So at this point, I think we'll open it up to questions. Joining me to answer any questions you may have are Community Development Director Ali Judase and Housing Programs Manager Jacob Newman.
Thank you, Alexis. It's a great presentation. And always, we always appreciate discussing when we can be supporting fantastic projects in our community for both unhoused as well as low-income folks. So maybe you can stop screen sharing so I can see my colleagues. It'll just be a little easier. There we go. And we'll start with some, any questions, Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Thank you, and thank you, Alexis, for the great report. Very easy to understand. You mentioned a loan. What in terms of, how does, can you provide a little bit more detail in terms of the loan and how that works? And then if the money, if a project doesn't happen or for some reason gets, has to get extended and the funds can't be spent, do we put any timing constraints around the funds?
So I see Jake turned his camera on. He's been working a lot on the terms of the loan. And so I want to see, I want to invite him and see if he would comment on your first question or both questions.
Thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to take both. So yes, if the funds aren't used within a certain period of time, the funds would, could go back to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In the case of the proposed loan for the Belvedere Street project, we have recommended a 24-month period to use those funds. That would mean that the sponsor, Canal Alliance, would need to have site control within that time period in order to use those funds. Certainly, the council could, could, could adjust that time period if they like. Regarding the loan itself and the structure and the design of these loans, their residual receipt loans, that means that they are paid back only if the project nets a profit. And that recognizes that affordable housing is challenging, and we are working with nonprofit sponsors. And so they, by their nature, do not make a profit. And, you know, in all good conditions and ideal situations, the sponsors work diligently to create projects that will net profits, where they can provide residual receipts back to their lenders. However, in the case, it would just be dependent on what those net proceeds are. And then it would be just divided proportionally among the different soft lenders in the project. And so for instance, a case example on the Vivilon Eden Housing Project, there are a couple of different soft lenders. There's the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley, there's the city, there's the county. Those three will share in proportional amounts the amount of proceeds in those residual receipt payments. Now, the the city's loans, they're at 3%, and it's a 55-year loan. And so that, that will be how the loans will accrue interest, simple interest over 55 years. There is an expectation that the loan will be paid back in full at the end of that 55-year period. However, during the term of the loan, there's no minimum requirement made on, it's just based on those residual receipts.
I think I understand, but I'm not quite sure where we, why we would make a distinction between granting and doing a loan.
It's really based on the structure, the financing in the project. And I believe for the 190 Mill Street, there was a recognition that this as a supportive housing project, they, and the way that Homeward Bound had structured their project, that the grant made more sense, and it was supportive of the housing and supported a project over the long term. Just so the council is aware, I believe that we have representatives from each of the sponsors with us, and they're prepared to provide comment during the public comment period. Or alternatively, perhaps if the council would like, they may be able to answer some of these questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
I have a question about the money left over. It looks like there's $1.8 million left in the In-Lu Fee Fund. What is the plan for that?
I'm not sure if there's a plan for that at this time period. There could certainly be some ideas, one of which could be an additional NOFA or perhaps there's other ways of looking at allocating those funds.
Yeah, I can, I can add, yes, there's definitely an expectation that we would release additional NOFAs. We really wanted to think about potential future projects that could come to us. And we didn't really want to put all our eggs in one basket of one NOFA, so to speak. So, you know, we know that there are projects coming forward in the future. For example, Northgate has a project that they're proposing. So there could be opportunity there. But, you know, with the remaining amount, we have the potential to release additional NOFAs in the future.
All right, so you've got, you've got, you've got your eyes on something for the, for the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. It's actually very, very helpful. I guess my question will be, when we are talking about a project sponsored by Canal Alliance, I really believe on what they are doing. It's very important in the community that they are looking at buying some existing buildings, turning them into, you know, families that they are currently residents in the canal. So my question would be like, we were talking about giving $400,000 and then trying to get the match through the other sources. And if they don't, you know, that we will be covering for that. I guess what I'm trying to say is that I would love to have the reassurance that we will provide the $800,000. And then, you know, we will be looking for other funding as well. And if we do that, then we'll give them half of it. Like, I'm looking at the opposite side, if that makes sense. Does it make sense?
Yeah, perhaps, just to respond as a, hearing a question in the, in there. I believe that the way that we structured the NOFA, the council can allocate funding above the 2.5 million. I believe right now, we'd recommend it around 2.6. And so if there was, for instance, a motion that the council would like to change the resolution that we have and to allow that additional funding for this project, the NOFA is structured in order to do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because what I'm thinking, you know, sometimes if you try to be competitive with other people to trying to, you know, purchase housing, I just want to make sure that they will have the funds that they need from us.
Councilmember Lorenz Galati, I just wanted to add on to Jake's response. And I know you're going to have public comment, and you're probably going to hear from the applicant as well. So that may change or influence what you choose to do tonight. But I just wanted to add that staff is also very supportive of the Canal Alliance concept they put forward and would love to see this move forward. The only reason why we put it at 400,000 is because we thought it was a good candidate for the county PLHA funds. So there are a couple of options tonight. The staff report was done and published and available before we found that that may not be a recommendation from, from county staff. And, and it's, that's not a done deal yet. That was just kind of at an early recommendation stage. So the options tonight, I think the council may want to consider is, if you stick with the, what was published in the staff report at 400,000, we could always just earmark that now and come back when there is a more specific project or when we know with greater certainty what other funding is available through the county, either through PLHA or other funding mechanisms. So there's a couple of different ways there if you wanted to stick with the 400,000 tonight. Or, as Ben mentioned, if you did want to allocate the full 800,000 tonight and kind of earmark or set aside that amount of money. As Councilmember Bushy pointed out, there is about 1.8 million in the balance after all of these recommendations. So we would have the funds to do that. This is a project other staff may or may not agree, but I think that you may see in front of you again anyway, because it's such an, such an early stage that this probably won't be the last time you have to decide on this particular topic. So whether you go with the 400,000 and an intent to fill the remaining gap or the full 800,000 tonight, I think staff's goal is to ultimately see this project funded at the, at the 800,000 that was being requested from Canal Alliance. Hopefully, that's helpful with your question.
That is very helpful. Thank you so much. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, that was, that was where my question was going to go is just, how much can we make the PLHA funding conditions automatic? Just to make sure that we're, we're seeing that through. So I think my question was answered in the last one. I'll save further comment for the next portion.
Thank you. Great questions. I had a follow-up question on the Canal Alliance project. And again, through the Canal Policy Working Group, we've been, at that table is the county and the city, as well as Marin Housing Authority. There are different groups there. So we've had a lot of conversations. So I know this is a goal of Canal Alliance. My question is this, when there's not My question is this, when there's not a specific property that is in front of us, um I would love to hear from staff, just the I guess, I don't want to say the lodge or is it best practices to be awarding money when there's not a project there? I don't ever remember doing that. Um, so if you could just speak to that, it seems unusual to me. Not, and again, it has no, I I I want Canal Alliance doing these types of projects, but there is no project there yet.
In this particular case, when the sponsor is looking to acquire the project, uh one of the challenges is having the funds available to um put down a a uh earnest cash and to enter into a purchase and sale agreement and then to make the transaction. And so having the commitment uh in an available, in a more available form would help with that acquisition project. So in a new construction project, it may not, you know, that wouldn't have that same necessity of having the availability of the cash upfront. Uh you're uh able to have a little bit more working time. Certainly, that's the case when you have a a sponsor that has um money that they can cover their pre-development costs. So it I think each project or each each approach, the uh acquisition rehab approach is is a little bit different than new construction. However, uh it does make uh some sense in this case to have that availability. It 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 would just make the deal go a little quicker once they if this project is the project that goes forward, or if in fact they need to find another one, uh having that earmarked would uh make it easier to come back to the council for the approval and to go forward with the the deal.
And can I just add that I'm you're correct that we wouldn't want, this isn't, it's unusual. We wouldn't want this to be the standard way we operate. And you know, we really want to um encourage development of new affordable housing projects um in new units. And but I think in this case, it made sense um to fund this particular project. But it, but you're correct, Mayor Kate, it wouldn't be, this isn't the the normal um um our normal funding recommendation would be normally for the units.
Okay, no, and thank you for that. And through Opening Doors Marin, we talked a lot about financing and the sequence of financing. So I'm actually really well familiar with the with this kind of conundrum. Um but I I I just want us to tread carefully uh because it is something that we have not done in the past. Um okay, so my next question was, and I think Director Judas, you you answered this a little bit. And it was building on what um Councilmember Bushy was asking about the the fund and what's left. Are there other, there must be other projects on the horizon, in fact, or maybe that will be uh putting money into the Affordable Housing um Trust Fund, or are they building those projects on site? I'm trying to get a sense of, will the fund refill? Just over time, do you know? Can you speak? I mean, I don't mean exact dollars, but do you have a sense of that?
Yeah, we have. Um, there are a couple of projects that have uh recently received approval to um uh pay in lieu of providing all of the affordable housing on site. Um, three fifty, Mary Dale and Northgate Walk um have um done that. They have not paid their in lieu fees. Um. And I don't know of any others at this time. I believe the other projects that we approved with um the Affordable Housing requirement are going to move forward with their proposal. So
Okay.
There are at least two.
So would we put on um, would we wait till we have additional funds to release the NOFA? Because the as we all understand, we want this money to be out in the community and and bring in a new unit. So was there a recommendation as to what that timing might be? Or are we going to wait to see how this uh round plays out? And I see the city manager has joined us as well.
Yeah, I think in the past, yeah, this is the second time that we've released a NOFA and we just kind of wanted some amount of time to go by so that we could uh see what other projects are out there, make have development interest grow as it changes over time. So we don't have a schedule right now where we'd release kind of NOFA three point O by July one or something like that. But I think we'd want to uh the the intent is not to sit on these funds. The intent is to turn these funds into new housing units. So uh we would be wanting to do that maybe towards the end of this year, we might we do another one. Um and Ally, I just was hoping you could also add uh that the fund also gets replenished through commercial projects, right?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you. So any new uh commercial projects also have their um affordable housing um linkage fee obligation. And that gets um that gets paid at the time they submit their building permit.
Okay, no, that's really helpful. Thank you. Um, any additional questions from the council? Okay, well, if you have any after-public comment, uh we will note any additional questions we hear from the public. Right now, I invite the city clerk to let's see if there's input on the NOFA and the funding recommendations. And I do invite any, I'm sorry, and I do invite the applicants or proposed projects to chime in for their two minutes if they so desire.
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Hello, I'm assuming you can hear me. Um, good evening to San Rafael City Council. My name is Tamara. I'm a project developer from Eden Housing, one of the applicants uh working on the Vivalon Healthy Aging Campus, uh formerly known as Whistlestop Development. Um, I first would just like to say thank you for considering our project for the recommendation of an additional one million in funding from the city's Affordable Housing Trust. Um, as you know, we are very grateful for this allocation to develop a healthy aging campus, which is very unique. Um mixed-use project in downtown San Rafael, where again, hundred percent of the sixty-six units are affordable senior housing with two two commercial floors that will be operated by our partner Vivalon, providing senior and healthcare services to residents in the surrounding community. So we hope to start construction, as Alexis mentioned, uh by April and complete construction by November next year. Um, we are just so appreciative of the efforts of of the council and also Jake, Ally, and and also other city staff we've been working with, just doing an excellent job and bringing this uh development to fruition um for the city of San Rafael. So thank you.
Thank you, Tamara.
Yeah, this is John Reynolds. Uh I live in the canal and I I'm very enthusiastic about the Canal Alliance has put forward this possibility of in on Belvedere. There is a need to release the compactness of people in apartments in the canal. We need to spread out the possibility of families in the canal. And this is a concept still in the canal, or it's not really in the bag yet. But uh the four hundred thousand was is very helpful to start off. And I'm appreciate you having the possibility of moving forward the eight hundred thousand once that project is is further down the line. But it really, we really do need uh more housing in the canal. We we need parking lots where people can put their trucks that they use and they work. We've got a lot of possibilities in the canal that we can work with. And certainly, housing is one of those things. I appreciate, though, the other projects, of course, um uh Mill Street is down the road and and that the getting that grant is very helpful. And of course, thirty-three oh one uh uh what but Kerner, yeah, is is through the um uh what is it? The uh uh the the uh the 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 funds that are available through that, uh Home Key Funds. And of course, the senior housing, nine nine nine, um, you know, uh Third Street, that's, I I didn't know about that, but that's great. We need to have a healthy aging and we need to have that uh for them. So the one million, I do appreciate that, that you can provide for that, too. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, this is uh Paul Fordham. I'm the co-CEO of Homeward Bound in Marin, along with the amazing Mary Kay Sweeney, who I wanted to mention because of Women's History Month and her inspiring leadership uh throughout this county for many, many years. Um we'd like to express our gratitude for your potential support of um the Mill Street, uh one ninety Mill Street development and the support in the past years. And it's really truly going to be a life-changing um supportive housing development for people who are outside. It's underway. Uh we hope to complete construction this August. And um it's really taking shape. Uh the siding's on now, the windows are in. Um in inside, you know, you can see the rooms coming together and just imagine people who are currently without a place to call home, moving in and um and really finding themselves there and having a safe place to be. So we appreciate your consideration of the grant and it really would push us significantly towards the finish line for this development. So we can focus on now putting the beds together and buying the mattresses and then moving people in. So thank you very much. Um you you've been supported since the first genesis of this, you know, first idea of this project. And we're we're grateful to this city and and this council.
Thank you, Paul and Mary Kay. Thank you.
Good evening, uh Mayor Kate. Can you hear me, Kate? Um, my name is, good evening, Mayor Kate, and council members. Uh my name is Omar Korea, CEO of Canal Alliance. First of all, I want to say thank you for considering our application. Um, I'm very supportive of the other projects, too. So I'm very excited to see them in in the list. As you know, the the housing crisis require a very comprehensive response. Although our proposal doesn't have new units, it really responds to the reality that many canal residents face, the fact that they are paying over sixty, seventy percent of the income and rent. So acquiring existing properties, rehabilitating them and making them affordable so that families can live with dignity is a strategy that cannot be minimized. Uh we do understand that it's very new unusual situation that we don't have control of the property. But we want to have, we want to be competitive and the market is 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 complicated. And I think this uh this um um loan provided by the city with a potential match of other funds will allow us to be more competitive so that we can respond to the few opportunities that are available on the market um and 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 in a very uh timely fashion and be successful in the acquisition. So I really want to say thank you to the staff for all the time and to all of you for the consideration.
Thank you, Omar.
Hi, uh my name is Corey Haraga and I'm a project developer for Eden Housing. And I'll be speaking on behalf of the thirty-three oh one Kerner project. And I just have a brief statement. Thank you, uh City Council for considering us. And thank you to the staff for a recommendation of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding. This project is important because it will provide a much-needed permanent supportive housing in San Rafael. The project will provide forty units of permanent supportive housing and services for people who are in need of mental health services and are experiencing homelessness, chronic homelessness, or who are at risk of chronic homelessness. Additionally, this project provides an opportunity for us to examine how we repurpose office buildings for affordable and permanent supportive housing in the future. In July of two thousand twenty-one, a mural mural was completed by the Canal Arts Canal Arts Initiative on the Kerner Building as a welcome sign to the canal neighborhood of San Rafael. We intend to preserve a mural and uphold the cultural values that are representing represented in the neighborhood. Is our hope that the Kerner Building not only provides permanent supportive housing, but also supports the community in which the building is located. Again, thank you for your support of this project. We hope to start construction in two thousand twenty-three and finish construction and move in residents in two thousand twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thanks. I just wanted to point out that there's there's a real distinction um in nonprofits. I know the comment um made by one of your staff was that um nonprofits are there, like the, it's in the name that they're they're nonprofit. But there's a big difference in performance amongst nonprofits. And unfortunately, um when it comes to unhoused populations, they're pretty much at the mercy of nonprofits that are rarely um examined. Homeward Bound has had some really serious issues. Um, the the shelters are running. Um, most people don't know what's going on in them. Um, there've been problems with severe problems with bedbag, bedbugs at some of their shelters. Um, there's a lot of the money that goes into, that's supposed to be going to oversight, is really just into um policing and and um harassing the tenants. Um I think it's also um important to point out that Homeward Bound has been charging um what is not called rent, but what is called feats. And this is absolutely insane, given the amount of money that they've received and the fact that they're not paying taxes because they're a quote nonprofit. So um, you know, you see, you find out that people are paying close to two-thirds or sometimes over two-thirds of their general assistance check or their veterans' benefits um for a congregate shelter at Homeward Bound. You also hear reports of women being sexually harassed um at the Mill Street Shelter. These are, these are things that the city should be looking at. Um, so when you look at nonprofits, it's not enough to just say, well, it's a nonprofit, it must be good. Um, you know, these are, these are not very transparent organizations. And unfortunately, when the cities get involved in working with them, um we have, the only way we have of tracking what they're actually doing is
Hi, this is Anne Gray. I'm CEO at Vivalon. And I just want to thank the city staff for your work on the NOFA and the rec- recommendation to support the affordable housing at Vivalon's Healthy Aging Campus. Uh, we're really grateful to the city for the high priority that you've placed on this project. And we're really excited to begin construction in April. So thank you very much. And I relinquish the rest of my time.
Thank you, Anne.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council. And if there is any additional questions, I'm grateful to the applicants who I know are still listening in and and I know they'll, they are available as well. So thank you. Um, additional questions from the council? I don't see any, but um what I I I to to me, one of the outstanding issues that Councilwoman uh Mica had brought up was around the Canal Alliance. So um what I had heard is there could be flexibility there. The staff recommendation as written is four hundred thousand uh as part of this. And then a TBD on the other end. I I just, I I think that's one outstanding issue that I'd like to hear from the council and have them weigh in as well as any other general comments. Um, so why don't I start with, I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So first to address the question around with Canal Alliance and the property, I think we have to look at how to do things differently um in many different ways. And if this is a help, if this is it's, you know, when we look at the size of these projects that have to be funded, it's really a little drop in the bucket in terms of the full dollar amount. But if this helps to move something along, I think it's very important that we look at this as a, it might be something, a different way that we've done in the past. But I think we got to try. And we got to throw everything at everything right now to try to get additional housing um in additional spaces. So if there is a recommendation or um acknowledgement that having this additional amount to support this project would potentially help move forward some additional housing units, affordable housing units, I do support that. Um, as far as the NOFA goes in general, I prefer that we just have more affordable housing in the properties that but you know, that I'll continue to say that. Um, I do like the the gap funding um and seeing projects that are so close to being done. Um, and we know things happen and things change, but it's great to see these dollar amounts, which in the big project scheme, um Alexa, it was really helpful to have the whole layout of the whole cost of the project and where this uh the NOFA amounts fit in. And they're not huge amounts in scheme of the entire project, but there are important amounts to show our commitment and for moving this project forward and to getting it closer to completion. And it's great to hear from all of our different partners that we work with um on on almost a daily basis. And to see that we can help and partner with them to move these projects along. So very supportive of where we're going with this. I appreciate all the work the staff has done to pull this picture together. Um and I guess we will continue with NOFAs in the future, but but we definitely need everything, every idea to come forward to for affordable housing.
Thank you. Well said. Um, I'll go to Councilmember Bushy and you you might, I I want to hear your input. And if you agree with what Vice Mayor said, I'd love your, you always wordsmith how we might uh change the current resolution if you are supportive of that. And if you agree with what Vice Mayor said, I'd love your, you always wordsmith how we might change the current resolution if you are supportive of that idea.
Changing the current resolution?
So of the, so the current one is having the four thousand, excuse me, four hundred thousand now. And then having it more firm, the additional four hundred thousand based on when they get the project. Because right now it's not, right? Director Judas, right now. Okay, so just building on what Vice Mayor Kurtz has said.
Right. In response to the mayor's question, yes, I agree with the Vice Mayor's approach. Conceptually, I'm not sure that we need to reduce this to writing and make this more formal. I kind of like the way it is right now. That is that we are signaling our willingness to provide what I would call seed capital. To this organization for what was described as a possibility of a project or a concept. And I think we need to be honest that, which I think, and this goes to the mayor's comment about we haven't done this before. I think one of the primary reasons that we're doing it now is due to the organization that is bringing forward this proposal. Due to our, how well-known the Canal Community Alliance is, how well-respected it is, how confident we are in that organization. We are willing to take this unprecedented step of being willing to provide seed capital for a concept. Because we have confidence that that organization can bring a concept to fruition. And I don't believe that we should be suggesting that we would like to see a lot more of these concept proposals coming forward. From organizations that don't have that, that cred, if you will, street cred to, to support such a. And inspire such a confidence that we have in that, in an organization to bring a concept forward. So I think it's, it's the right balance of a circumstance where a respected organization has a concept. And we want to put forward our funds at the four hundred thousand dollar level, which is our seed capital. In addition, we want to leave the door wide open for any other types of funding, particularly the county PLA HA. Funding, hoping that that will be forthcoming. And if it's not, we have a situation where our staff can come back to us to amend that award if need be to move it forward. So I am, I am in support of the project as it is, as it is presented. So that's my specific comments. Do you want general comments too?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay, I want to like pull the microscope up to the big picture. This is such an awesome agenda item. Each one of these projects have taken years, years to get through the first stage, you know. We had to get these in lieu funds. They didn't just fall from the sky. We had to create the programs that collected the funds. Get developers to come, pay the funds and have them in the fund. And then, then completely separately, we needed to have all these incredibly worthwhile projects being brought forward in our community. And collecting funds from, you know, every which place on, you know, hoovering them up wherever they are. And then they just need these little gap funds for us to bring it, bring it to across the line. This is just a fantastic, it just, it feels so good to see these things being, being brought, brought together and actually happening. Money gets spent on real projects. Each one of, each one of these have unique stories. I could go on for hours about how things came to be and who pulled what rabbit out of a hat to, to make things happen. But it is, it is a pleasure to see these, these, these projects and the funding that we're in a position to offer to them at, at this point. So I support the resolution as brought forward by staff.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the comments from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bushy. I think I have a clarifying question that I would like to ask of staff in this regard. So there's an assumption that I'd like you to challenge if it's wrong, which is that if the Canal Alliance needed to move quickly. Because it sounds like there's a competitive situation, would we be able to respond in a timeframe that, that would be able to support them if there was. You know, a decision by the PLHA that required it, how quickly would we, I'm assuming we'd be able to move in a timely manner? Can you confirm that?
Yeah, I mean, I can start and Jacob, if you want to add anything to this, feel free. But we, so the guidelines allow for rolling funding sources. So we would be able to come back if your council is in support of that idea, that we would just be able to easily agendize it and put it. And, you know, bring forward a resolution with that recommendation.
Okay.
Pretty quickly, yeah.
Got it. So just within, I'm hearing within one cycle of a council meeting. And so that to me is a period of potentially two weeks. I just, I don't know how these things work in terms of development and how nimble things need to move, but I'm assuming that two weeks is adequate time. But it's an assumption.
Yeah. Why, keeping the door wide open, that's what you're asking for, really is what Councilmember Bushy was talking about.
Yeah.
Jacob, do you have a sense on that? Because I think that's an important point.
I think I need to look to Director Judas for her thoughts on that. And it looks like she thinks that that's a comfortable timeline.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, because I like, because I like the spirit of it. And that's, that's the basis of my support for the staff recommendation is just the, because I, I'm sensing that there, there could be a timing scenario. Where if it's not funded, there needs to be a commitment. I just don't, I'm actually not familiar with the sequence of things that need to happen. So I'm looking to staff just to make sure that, that we could respond adequately. So I am in support of the staff recommendation. I do recognize that, that this is a little bit outside of what we normally do. And I appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments on, you know, we need to think differently and do differently. So I support that. And then I think leaning into where Councilmember Bushy was already going, yes, I think that we, when we take in lieu fees. There is, I think, a response of skepticism to say, well, that's just getting out of building affordable housing. And that's certainly one way to look at it. But it's these moments where we're able to actually leverage them to get these projects over the line. If we didn't have these otherwise, it would be more difficult to appropriate these, this gap funding. So I'm happy for these moments. I think folks that are skeptical should remain skeptical and we should hold ourselves accountable. But this is a moment that I'm very proud to be able to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Gulati.
Yeah, thank you. You know, it was great to hear from the CBOs as well and from my fellow council members. I guess it's like, I do understand the competitiveness of the situation, you know, where you're really trying to sometimes compete with other developers. That they want to buy the same building to maybe change the type of housing and make it like high-end. So I just want to make sure that the money is earmarked for that. Because if you are in that situation, that, you know, we won't lose the opportunity. Because I think it's extremely important for the, for the specific neighborhood to be able to secure that. So that's, if the staff, if that's the recommendation and they think that that's could be done, I just want to make it super easy. You know, to make sure that we don't miss that opportunity. I love to see the in lieu fees being used for these projects. I will actually love it when the projects decide to develop low-income housing in different areas of San Rafael. Because we are looking at three projects that they are all in the canal, so, which are great projects. So I'm very proud of that, but just keeping that in mind that it's always great when we can add low-income housing in all the neighborhoods. So, but with that, I definitely will support the recommendation. I'm very excited for the projects.
Thank you. Thank you for all your comments and thank you to staff for working with our community. I agree with Councilmember Bushy. This is awesome to be able to celebrate these incredible projects. Could be one thing if we had the funding and not, I mean shovel-ready, projects are already going, I mean shovel-ready, the Homeward Bound project, that shovel's been turned. And as Paul and we know from Mary Kay, that people will be moving in the end of this year. That's amazing. Vivilon having a groundbreaking ceremony coming up imminently. That's amazing. Project Home Key, having that convert to housing. So having all these on the horizon, having them real and actual projects is exactly where we want to be. And I also agree with what Vice Mayor Kurtz was saying about how we have to think about it differently. So even though Canal Alliance does not have a specific project, to Mary Best's point, we have such confidence in the Canal Alliance. And they've been so clear about their strategies to support low-income folks and the immigrant folks that they support in their community. That we really understand where it is they want to go. So being able to allocate these dollars upfront and then keeping the door wide open. I think the resolution, from what I hear from Director Judas is written, so the door is really wide open. So if it's one week or two weeks that we would be able to respond to, to address Councilwoman Yuren's Gulati's concern too. That we want to make sure that we're nimble enough and I'm convinced that we are. So unless there are any other questions, again, another reason that we should be having cake. There are so many reasons to be having cake, because there's so much to celebrate, but we will do it when we have groundbreaking ceremonies. Hopefully, we will be invited to all those ceremonies. So with that, I will ask the city clerk to join us. And. A motion on this agenda item, obviously, as always, reading it into the record.
I'd be happy to read the motion.
Okay.
Is it, I'm reading all three. Is that correct, city clerk?
I have the resolution authorized and the expenditure of funds.
Yeah, so it's just one paragraph.
Okay, the expenditure, adopt a resolution authorizing the expenditure of one million seven hundred and fifty thousand. Yep, in funds from the Affordable Housing in Lufi Fund, Fund Number Two Four Three. And eight hundred and fifty thousand from the Low Moderate Fund, Fund Four Nine Five. And funds from each account to complete all documents associated with the funding, the loans. For four one hundred percent affordable housing projects and fulfillment of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund twenty twenty-one NOFA.
I second. Okay, then move in second. And that was slightly different wording than the one I have on my cheat sheet, but is that okay, city clerk? Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Again, thank you, staff. The work to this point was great. And we know that you'll continue to support these projects going forward. So thank you all. Truly switching gears, we are inviting Economic Development Director Danielle O'Leary to join us. And we'll be talking about the cannabis program, state regulatory updates. Hello, Director O'Leary.
Hello. I am going to be sharing my screen with you all real quick. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council and members of the audience. My name's Danielle O'Leary. I'm the Economic Development Director with the City of San Rafael. And tonight I'm bringing forward just some standard regulatory updates. So nothing super exciting, but important and necessary that we keep our codes in sync with state codes. And so tonight, what we're looking at doing in our cannabis business resolution is updating the references to the Bureau of Cannabis Control. So you'll see BCC is the regulatory agency we've been dealing with. The state has merged that into one new department called the Department of Cannabis Control. And so we're going to be updating all of our references to state regs to match this new department name. We're also going to be updating our resolution to include cannabis manufacturing and type six state licenses. So that it's very clear what cannabis manufacturing we allow. And so before we get started, I just thought it might be beneficial for members of the council, just for me to kind of recap where we've been with our cannabis program. Because you don't hear about it too often. Back in two thousand eighteen, the City of San Rafael, we began a pilot medical cannabis program. And then in two thousand nineteen, we broadened that to include adult use. So now we have both medical and adult-use cannabis licensure in the city limits. The city's Economic Development Department is responsible for revenue collection. We are responsible for licensure, working with the state on the regulatory framework policy development and with our supporting city departments. Our program currently has, oops, four different license categories for commercial cannabis activity within city limits. And it's all in our industrial zones. And those categories include standalone distribution wholesale. So this is really the backend. This is not open to the public. This is wholesale distribution, which are reflected in a type eleven or a type thirteen license. Cannabis manufacturing licenses, which what we permit within city boundary limits is a type six, which is non-volatile extraction. A type N, which is infusion, and a type S, which basically just means shared use. So you're thinking, if I could equate it to anything, it'd be like a cottage food kitchen where you'd have multiple small cottage manufacturers providing product. We also allow for delivery, which is our non-storefront retail state license type nine. And then we also afford licenses for our testing laboratories. And so for a total, we have twenty-six licenses. We have about twelve active right now. And with that, the last piece that I wanted to touch on was the syncing up of our terminology with our zoning. So back in August of two thousand twenty-one, as part of the general plan zoning amendments and changes. We updated our cannabis manufacturing designation that you can see here on the slide. So what's important with our resolution, the Cannabis Business Operating License Resolution, is that our zoning nomenclature matches the resolution nomenclature. So you'll see that cannabis manufacturing has been added. And so with that, it's really brief, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the program. And what we're looking for is just for approval from council to adopt the new resolution and restate it in its entirety. And what that does is it creates the fresh, new, most updated resolution. So businesses seeking to do business in the city have the most current regulations and references to the proper State Department.
Thank you.
And I will, let's see, try to stop share.
There you go.
See everybody.
Okay, and just to clarify, there are no additional licenses being proposed with this update.
Correct.
Okay, just make that clear. Okay, any questions for my council members, Vice Mayor?
Just one quick question. In terms of the updates, when was the last time it was updated? And do you have any thoughts of the frequency of when we'll get new updates and so much is changing in this industry?
Sure. That's a great question. The last time we updated it was November of two thousand twenty-one. And the state, I would anticipate that we will not need to update it again this year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, sorry. The, my question, I think I know the answer, I just wanted to just get it on the, on the record. The transition to the new, it's not, we'll call it, the new naming of zoning is such that it's identical except for the naming. Is that, is that accurate?
It's identical. It does allow for additional extractions. So it allows for non-volatile, which could be mechanical. If you think like a, like a press through a press machine to wires or through dry ice. With infusion, it was really through only butter and olive oil or buying a pre-purchased item of oil extracted from a separate manufacturer. So back in, back in two thousand twenty-one and as part of the general plan updates. The reason we changed this designation was to help our struggling manufacturers, that they were able to vertically integrate and do more of the product within their own facility. And so it does allow for a small adjustment, but, but not, but not major.
Got it. No, thank you for that clarification. And then what had been deemed zoning that was commercial previously continues to, in that same spirit is what I'm also hearing as well, it's the same locations.
That's all at the same locations. We did, as part of the general plan update, remove any option of commercial office. Because of the increased manufacturing ability here, we wanted to make sure that it was within an industrial zone. None of our existing licenseses are in commercial office and so there was no impact there. None of our existing licenseses are in commercial office, and so there was no impact there.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, good questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, any questions? No. Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
No questions right now. Thank you.
I don't have any either, so I will ask the city clerk to join us. There she is. I will take a public comment on the cannabis regulatory update.
If calling in through telephone, you'll need to press star nine. And if you're participating on Zoom, you'll need to use the raise hand feature. You'll have two minutes to provide public comments, and you'll be muted once time has elapsed. And I see no hands raised right now. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back, or a motion unless there's additional comments.
Well, I have a comment.
Oh, yes, please. Okay, Councilmember Bushy, go ahead.
I have a comment. Actually, what I have is accommodation for Director O'Leary. I'd like to commend her for her continued diligence and foresight in our cannabis program. It's been, I know it's a model throughout the state that she's consulted far and wide. And so thank you very much for keeping us up to date, keeping our house in order, and keeping this program running well for our community, balancing our interests in having a program that fits within San Rafael's particular interests. So with that preparatory comment, I would like to move that we adopt the, I guess we accept, are we just accepting the report? No, we have to amend. I'm sorry. I move that we adopt the resolution amending the Cannabis Business Operator License Program and restating it in its entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a second.
Second.
Moved in second. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero, and I underscore the accolades to Director O'Leary. You are a true expert and have kept us on track, so thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you so much.
Okay, the final agenda item is an interim financial update and budget amendments to reflect operational activity and mid-year personnel changes. Director Atiya Haid is with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So you should be able to see that.
Looks great.
Thanks for having me here tonight to present you with the fiscal year 2122 mid-year budget update. I'm going to go ahead and stick to the main highlights, so I won't hit all of the specifics of the staff report, but I'm happy to circle back to items addressed in the report if needed. The executive summary, so really, the Cliff Notes version of the staff report is fourfold. Staffless forecasting, general fund revenue increases of $5 million, of which 4.7 million is in sales tax and 360,000 is related to property tax. We're requesting an increase in general fund appropriations of 1.3 million, of which 533,000 is related to furloughs that were approved and retroactively repaid, but not part of the budget. 500,000 for public safety overtime costs due to staffing shortages, largely due to COVID leave, but also injuries and vacant positions. We're also requesting an increase in appropriations of $50,000, which should be allocated towards specialized wellness resources and services for our first responders, which is something that's very important to us, and an increase of $250,000 to the recreation subsidy, as it continues to see adverse effects of the pandemic. Additionally, we have rescue plan money that you are aware of, of course, that's about $16 million. This is not included in the operating budget that you currently see, as at year-end, it will be reconciled as far as revenues received, money committed or spent, and then the remaining fund balance that the council has assigned to other priorities and projects. And we'll also be looking at some small proposed personnel changes that will help us operate better. So the best slide of all, this is the gift that keeps on giving. So no complaints, but as we've been reporting, unexpected increases for several quarters now. Sales tax is a revenue stream that's been extremely difficult to predict and forecast. As we continue to analyze this and discuss with our third-party experts, HDL, at this point in time, I can almost confidently say that this might be a new baseline for us. So the revenue that we see in sales tax could be a new baseline. However, that can quickly and easily change depending on consumer spending, economic pressures, which are very unknown, and we'll go into that a little bit later, interest rates and such. Our increases really for San Rafael have been in three main categories. One is autos and transport, the other is building and construction, and the last is the county pool. And really, autos and transport is because we have so many wonderful dealerships here and demand for new vehicles. My understanding is there is only, public transportation is only up to 20% of what it used to be in the past, pre-COVID. So that's huge. That means that people must be working remotely, but then also commuting using their personal vehicles or purchasing vehicles. As far as building and construction, we are very lucky to have so many new projects going on in San Rafael, which contributes to lumber purchases and large other dollar item purchases. And then the county pool, we expect to see that continue to deliver the types of revenues that it's delivering. And that's really based on the Wayfair rule that was passed about a year ago, which was about online purchases and the point of where they were ordered and the destination of where they were ordered. And so that has contributed to our county pool funding, and we've seen results, good positive results there. I've got these two graphs here because I mainly just want to show in these two large sectors, these categories that we've discussed, where we're seeing, you know, why I'm getting a little bit more comfortable calling this a baseline. So for autos and transportation and building and construction, of course, you see these dips that occurred in 1920, and these are solely to do to the COVID impacts. But then they go up fairly quickly. So it's a V shape, which there were lots of different curves being thrown around at the very beginning of the pandemic. There was U shape, there are all sorts of different things, bell shaped. But really, what we're seeing more of is a V shape, which means that we had, you know, we declined, but then we came back up fairly quickly. And so this linear line is, what that means is we're expecting, the way that we would forecast it, is that we would expect it to grow by the same amount in each unit of time, right? So that's just a very general forecast. And of course, you can see that that's not always what it's doing. But we're back up to that linear line now. And again, at this point in time, we're not seeing numbers that are decreasing our sales tax. We're not seeing any evidence that it's decreasing. There are risks and other mitigants that we'll go over, but we're not seeing changes or decreases in our sales tax at this point. And Councilmember Bushy, this was specifically for you. I thought you would appreciate it based on the question that you asked the last time I presented, so. And then property taxes. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we are seeing an increase in secured and unsecured property tax of approximately 360,000. What's more important to me that I want to impress upon you is median prices from Marin and San Rafael are continuing to grow. There was just an article in the paper today about it as well. But we are expecting interest rates to increase. And normally, when that happens, there is a possibility that we could see less demand. But any softening in the market, if that were to occur, wouldn't be reflected in our revenue stream until about a year or two from now. So we'll be watching it, but we don't see it affecting our property tax this year, certainly. A little bit about our economic forecast. Although I'd like to tell you, we don't expect any material variances between estimates now and year-end actuals in June. But many variables in today's market have me on daily watch. So a few things that I wanted to share with you that we hear often that could negatively affect revenue growth. Supply constraints, that's something that we've been experiencing. And with the stimulus and consumer spending that has actually increased over the past few years, the supply constraints have not affected or decreased our revenue streams. But with stimulus no longer being given to the individuals and with potential US consumer spending decreasing this year in 2022, we may see supply constraints negatively impact the City of San Rafael. The Federal Reserve is expected to increase interest rates. So when that happens, normally what you see is a contracting in your revenues. So that could happen. The Federal Reserve is planning on meeting March 16th, and so we'll know a little bit more there. But still, the plan, what I'm reading, is that they expect to increase rates at least a quarter percent, so 25 bips, but might be moving faster, so it could go up to 50%, half a percent. And then inflation has US consumers feeling more financial pressure and stress. There was a survey done by Deloitte this past month, and there seems to be a real high level of anxiety based around financials. So financial stress is high, which means that people are going to save more. Instead of going out and spending the money that they've been making and receiving, there's potential that they'll be saving it for, you know, bad times. And then, of course, the risk of COVID-19 variants that may emerge, that has not gone away. And although we've got so many more people getting vaccinated and boosted, which is great, this is still a potential issue and something we may have to mitigate. ARPA funds, so just ongoing reporting that I want to make sure to get to council every time I present. We are continuing to report to the Treasury as to how we're utilizing the funds. To date, we funded and/or encumbered, so entered into contracts or commitments, approximately 3.5 million. The full city amount is eligible for the revenue loss provision. We've talked about that in the past, but if anyone wants me to go into more detail, I'm happy to. And the main things we need to meet here is that we must have the money committed or encumbered by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. So I'll just keep this as an ongoing reminder, because it's a really large dollar item for us, and I want to make sure we're reporting on it. And then lastly, staffing. So we're requesting and recommending the addition of a public works inspector position, which should be fully funded by gas tax receipts. And then we'd like to ask for you to approve two new job descriptions and changes to current job descriptions in the Community Development Department. So not yet hiring there, but we'd like the ability to at some point, with no headcount change and no budget change, but we would like to get the job description approved. So what's next? Well, it's already March, and so we're working on the fiscal year 2223 budget, and we'll be coming to you for that in the next several months here. But after we close out the year in June and get all of our invoices and receivables, and we'll come to you in September and report on the final year-end activity. We will continue to report out on ARPA uses and future uses as well. We'll continue to monitor the market and report back to you on trends that we're seeing and things that we may want to make you aware of. And then we might also want to consider increasing our emergency reserve fund. Right now, it's at 10%, but given the increase in revenues this year, this could be a good thing to do. So lastly, the recommended action is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 2122 budget and personnel changes. And with that, I will close out of the PowerPoint and open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Director. It's a great presentation. I love that graph of the R plan and then reality. That is just hits home, but we're working to have our plan look be that linear line.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kurtz, any questions?
Great report. Thank you. It's always nice to get an update and a positive update. It's great. Do we have any outstanding debt that needs to be addressed?
We do have outstanding debt. We have small amounts of outstanding debt. Our largest outstanding debt would be the Public Safety Center debt. So all of our other debt has been either, you know, budgeted for in future years, part of our ongoing forecast, 10 to 20-year forecast, and included really in our operating budgets. So I like where you're going with that, but we've done very well with keeping our debt low.
Great. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bushy.
Given the events that we opened our meeting this evening, tonight, with, that's specifically the invasion in Ukraine and the ripples through the economy, particularly on fuel costs. Are you making any sort of emergency budgetary modifications to account for that new staggering risk?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bushy. So two things about that. One, in general, what I'm reading through Forbes, Bloomberg, is that this war should not affect us greatly from an economic standpoint, us being the state of California and the United States. But it definitely affects us as individuals and as local agencies, because to your point, it's a huge dollar increase. So we are currently trying to absorb that. We have, you know, kind of worked through our budgets and worked with DPW and FIRE and others, and we're trying to absorb that cost. Should we need to increase our appropriations, we'll do that. We'll come ask you for that towards closer to year-end. So we'd like to see where we land, but that is something that we are watching, and we may have to ask for increased appropriations for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mica.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I also love the graphs that you've been using. So that's a, you make a, you know, financial presentation like really entertaining. So thank you so much, and it's great news. So I don't currently have any questions. I have similar questions to Councilmember Bushy. But that was, yeah, we shall see as I go through gas stations and looking at the price of, you know, refilling. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for accommodating me. I'm a little under the weather. That's coming through the camera in my voice. Thank you, Director Atiya Haid. That was great. I think as I look to the history of these types of reports, I am always interested, especially with the reserve part of our budget, which is, I believe, part of our charter at this point, that we have to maintain one. You mentioned 10%. Can you elaborate a little bit more, just for the sake of public understanding, and even, I would say, refresh mine, about the reserve threshold? And, you know, how are we doing with respect to that? And do you think it's still healthy?
That's a really good question. Thank you. So the city has one main reserve, and that is our general fund emergency reserve. This reserve is basically for the event that we seize operations or we have a pandemic similar to the one we had a few years ago, and we have to, we have no revenues coming in, and we have to continue, we're obligated to continue our expenses, our payroll, things like that. That's what we would use this reserve for. It is currently at 10%, so we are meeting our policy. And what the policy says, which was approved several years ago by council, is that the city shall keep a general fund reserve of 10% of expenses. And so if your expenses are $90 billion, then you should expect at the end of the year, then we would true up that. then we would true up that reserve to be $9 million. And we are currently at the appropriate 10% level. That said, and kind of geared towards your, your other question, GFOA, um, says that the reserve policy or reserves should normally be about 17%. That's best practice. I've seen cities and towns with very little reserves, so 5%, 3%. Um, and then other cities that, you know, go up to 25%. So we might want to consider putting away more reserve or increasing the policy so that we can meet the GFOA recommended reserve. But in looking at our history of at least the past 10 years, we have dug into this reserves, but we have not depleted it ever. So it just depends on, you know, what type of risk we're willing to take. Back in the Great Recession, I know that it was brought down substantially. Um, luckily, we did not have to do that these past few years with COVID, but we did eat into it a few hundred thousand dollars and then we repaid it. Or, you know, we, we made it back whole this last year.
All right, thank you. That's a, that was a very wonderful answer. It made a lot of sense to me. Um, I can hear that, uh, 10 is where we are, that there, but there, whoa. Okay, wow.
Trying to save energy.
No, it's good. Um, uh, so thanks for, thanks for that. Um, obviously there's, um, I'm not seeing an, an imminent, uh, event that says we should, uh, modify what we currently have. I think it gives us, affords us some flexibility, but it is interesting to hear the recommendation closer to 17. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have any further questions. Ones I had have already been asked. So with that, I will ask the city clerk to join us, see if there's public comment on our fiscal update.
Thank you. If you're watching by Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature to provide public comment or if you're calling in, you'll need to press star nine. And then once the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. You will have two minutes to provide public comments and you'll be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands raised. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. Um, and it's, I'll just quickly go around, uh, for any additional comments before I ask for a motion. And I'll start with the Vice Mayor. No further comments. Okay, Councilmember Hill. Oh, she was saying, she was, I was, right? Did you want to say something, Vice Mayor? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say thank you for the updating the report and it's all good.
Important to say that, that this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Councilmember Hill, any comments, additional comments?
No, just appreciation, continued appreciation, uh, Director Atiya. I think I've said it in the past that, um, we, you are such a great steward of, of our finances and, uh, look forward to your continued stewardship. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mica.
Yeah, no, um, no questions. It was such a great report. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
No comments, but I'm the last, so I could make a motion, right?
You can make a motion. Before you do that, I actually would like to, um, add my compliments and to point out that since we last met, um, Director Atiya Haid has actually been promoted to administrative services director. You might notice her new title on the Zoom. Um, and in this new position, she will both oversee the finance department. So yes, we, we have her benefit of her, uh, expertise and skillset there as well as the human resources department. So I just wanted to clarify that and congratulate you. Uh, we are delighted that you are in that new position. Um, okay, so with that, now we all accept a motion. Councilmember Bushy.
Okay, I move that we adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of San Rafael, adopting amendments to the 2021, 2022 budget and improving mid-year personnel changes.
And on second, uh, moved in second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you, Director Atiya Haid. We always appreciate your updates. Okay, we don't have any San Rafael successor agency, but I do invite staff who might be listening to turn on your cameras. Um, we will be adjourning today in the memory of Judge, uh, Richard Briner. And I know that city, our city attorney, Rob Epstein, wants to say a few words about the incredible person that Judge Briner was. So I'll turn it over to you, Rob.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kate. Uh, it is with a deep, uh, sense of sorrow, uh, and gratitude to Mayor Kate for the privilege, um, of closing tonight's meeting in honor of Judge Richard Briner. Sorry, sorrow for, uh, Dick, the loss of Dick Briner. He was a longtime, uh, resident of the city of San Rafael, husband of Dottie Briner, who sat for many years on the San Rafael City Council as an elected member of the council back in the 1980s, uh, father of Deborah and Danny. Uh, Dick was, uh, appointed, uh, by Governor Brown as a judge of the Superior Court and then elected several times. Before he was a judge, Dick served as a public defender in the county and also as a municipal attorney. Judge Briner had a statewide reputation as a gifted trial judge. He was much loved and respected by the legal community. And as an example, uh, I quote Mike Kelly, who is really well-known as one of the top trial attorneys in the state and throughout the country, uh, he's at the Walkup Firm in San Francisco. And he wrote me, uh, after hearing about Judge Briner's passing and put it quite well, I, I thought. He said that he was very sorry, of course, to hear about Judge Briner's loss. And he, uh, and Mike said, and I quote, that Dick was a bright, decent, caring man, and that translated into a great judge. And I can't agree with him more. He was a role model. Uh, he, Dick was a role model and mentor to many, many attorneys, both in our county and beyond, and many judges. Uh, I think, uh, all of the judges on our Superior Court bench today would tell you that he served in that role for them. And this goes back, uh, in terms of him serving in those roles for our community more than 50 years. And I, I can tell you that, um, Dick Briner certainly, uh, was that for me. His guidance and support was tremendously important to me throughout my career for the past 30 years. Judge Richard Briner was deeply loved and will be sorely missed. May his memory be a blessing to all those who knew and loved him. Thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you, members of the council.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you for those beautiful words. Uh, this meeting is adjourned in honor of, in memory of Judge Briner. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.